At 6:30, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by the invocation. Michelle Ross is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heavenly Father, you are the source of all gifts. Among those gifts are this day's daily bread and our opportunity for service. We thank you for these gifts. Father, fear and anger remain an ever-growing chorus of voices as apprehension, distrust, and suspicion lead people to a loss of civility, common courtesy, fractionalization, and hatred. These signs seem boundless, and as they percolate from neighborhood to neighborhood, town to town, state to state, and nation to nation. Father, we ask that you replace our anger and fear with your love for others, joy in living, and peace, so that we may shed alarm, doubt, foreboding, and dread. Please deliver us to patience permitting us to be steadfast in difficult circumstances. Father, it is only when we turn to you in prayer that we can love those who torture us, pray for those acting beyond the bounds of civil discourse, and encourage those stunted by an evolving atmosphere of disdain. Father, help us to be faithful to your call, to act for the common good, to show your graciousness to those we meet, and to demonstrate kindness in the face of irritation. Finally, we call on you to share with the many public servants here this evening your patience, wisdom, and judgment on each of the items before us this evening, and may our thoughts, words, and deeds be only those that you would have us pursue. Please continue to protect, preserve, and prosper our community, state, and nation. Amen.
Item number three. Item number three, citizens to be heard. The first is David Pierce, followed by Todd Broderick.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. It's nice to see a full house. I'm not here to insult anyone or attack anyone personally. I just feel like when I come to these meetings, I'd like to hear perhaps the city manager's report, and the fire department, and the chief of police. You know, a lot of times, I can't stay here that long, and you know, I notice that people who talk about certain things, development, they talk for a long time, and then they just leave, and I don't ever get to hear the people who are in the things that are relevant to me. I mean, I could go online, I suppose, but I'd like to be able to hear them. So, I don't know if you could ever change it up a little bit occasionally, because what the city manager has to say, and the chief of, fire chief, and the chief of police are really important to me, and the public works, I don't want to forget you, Brandon. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and like I said, I don't mean to, I'm not attacking anyone personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, if you'd give us your name and where you live.
Mr. Mayor, hi. Todd Brolick, 20800ers Branch. Council members, nice to see you. Thank you for your service, first of all. Wanted to support and speak in support of your agenda item 6.12. It was nice to see on the agenda the town plan to be discussed once again, and wanted to voice support for your further development of that plan, and in particular, two items. One, obviously, if anyone knows of me, they know of my past interest in appropriate use of the municipal tract. And secondly, knowing that you are in discussions with the state with regard to the proposed, and I guess imminent, now that it's been approved, a plan for expansion in the turn lanes on Northwest Military, but would be very interested in you pursuing that in a manner that provides for that development or redevelopment of the highway to be done in such a way that it, of course, aesthetically is pleasing to the city and appropriate with regard to its overall development, not such that it's a six-lane with a turn lane and only, with no trails or an ability to have quality pedestrian access that's not immediately adjacent to traffic. So, anyway, would want to encourage that and say thank you.
Thank you very much, Todd. Next, Maggie. Maggie, if you'd give us your full name and where you live.
Yes, Maggie Kautz, 122 Mossy Cup West, and I'm here on a couple of things. I was speaking first as the president of the Chauvinot Park Women's Club. I want to thank our city manager, our fire chief, and our police chief for presenting our march program here at City Hall. It was very innovative. They gave so much of their time, and those in attendance, they put, were really pleased to hear, we don't know, you know, we got a city manager, we got a fire chief, we got a police chief, we have security, we have this, we have that. They put a face and an activity to everything they do, many, many things that our membership was not aware of. We were able to have, we wanted to open it to citizens. Unfortunately, the invitation did not get out until the day after the meeting, but we still had folks here, and somebody said if we had any more people, we wouldn't have had time for all the questions, because we did go like 20 minutes over our program. And I want to thank everyone for that. Next, again, as president of the Women's Club, I want to thank all of the ladies, and they have just done a fabulous job this year, and two people in particular. Marilyn Barrier, who headed up the bras for a cause. We did this a couple of years ago, thinking this was a nice thing to do for the community. We did 333 bras, say, well, it's time to do it again, clean out your closets, girls. And we thought, we're going to have a goal of 500. We're going to go over that 333. On SORT Day, we had 1,102 bras that were distributed within the next couple of days to six communities who were happy, happy to see them for their folks that were in need. Now, these are not like Salvation Army who sell, or Goodwill who might sell. These are the intake people who have people who need these undergarments. We are now approaching 1,300 of these items due to our publicity over three TV stations. I mean, they're coming in from everywhere, and we're thinking, oh dear, this may be a lifetime project for us, but we don't care. Now, I'm speaking personally for myself, and I want, oh, and Marcia Stipek, who solely put the city directory together. It was just wonderful, and she took all the pictures, she got them to the publisher. We hope this did not cause her heart attack. She's home and recovering nicely. I want to thank you. So, I quickly want to go to section 611 on appointing citizens to a steering group. I think we already have a steering group. I don't know what exactly this is about, but I ask that you listen to it very carefully. To me, it sounds like a boondoggle. We have a steering committee. It's called a city manager and all of his lieutenants that work with him, and I've been on many of these committees, not in charge, but attending. They have gone fabulously. We don't need another layer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now at item four. We're going to start with Allen. Allen, city council comments.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Mary Ann?
Good evening. Thanks so much for coming out.
Bob?
Great attendance tonight. Thank you for being here.
Michelle?
Thank you all for being here.
Mike?
Good evening. Two quick announcements and reminders. The Second Annual Chauvinot Park City Council Candidate Forum, hosted by Neighborhood Watch, will be Thursday, April the 6th, here at City Hall from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And then, the following week, the Women's Club Meet the Candidates Night. I don't know how many, what, whether that's the 10th or 12th or what, anyhow, their Meet the Candidates Night will be Wednesday, April the 12th, here at City Hall, and Keeping it Easy, same time, 7:00 to 8:30. So, come out and meet the candidates, ask them questions, and participate in Democracy 101. Thanks for being here.
Okay, we're now on section 5.1, Arbor Day Earth Day. Michelle?
Well, just to, everybody should know that it's April 22nd. We're all excited about it. We're going to have, it's got a bat theme, and we're going to do the poster contest again, and we're going to have crafts, crafts around bats, and Mike Colmier in the back made bat houses, so we're going full-barm with that theme, and we'll have the same entertainment that we've had in the past, and it should be a great event. Hope everybody can attend.
Yeah, just a supplemental note on that. The people from Bat Conservation International, who are the people that manage the Bracken Bat Cave, which happens to be the largest bat cave in the world, there are over 20 million bats that are going to be there at the end of the season for the mothers and the babies. They own a significant portion of land between New Braunfels and San Marcos, where these bats are habitants. They are what sweep our sky of mosquitoes and other vermin. They eat tons of, I think it's something like six to eight tons of insects a night in the area, which is an amazing resource for our community. They're going to be presenting at Blatman Elementary. We've invited them to speak there, and they're going to speak to our citizen children, and they're also going to be coming to City Hall. And I hope that everybody makes it, puts it on their schedule to join us to listen to Fran Hutchins and the other representatives of Bat Conservation International. The next item is 5.2, Community Directory. I want to commend the Women's Club. The Women's Club has been a force in the community of Chauvinot Park for decades. They were here before Mary and I got here 30 years ago, and they're still here, and they've been active that entire time. When we first arrived 30 years ago, they put together kind of a list of the women that were in the Women's Club, which included most of the households in our community at the time, and then they changed it over time as the community grew, and we added other neighborhoods. And so, for the last 17, 18 years, 19, 20 years, they have been providing us a community-wide directory, and they have arranged for financing on their own through outside groups that pay for the publication of this very useful resource for everybody in the community. I want to commend all of the women in the Women's Club, but most specifically, I want to lift up Marcia Stipek. Marcia did a yeoman's job in preparing this year's Chauvinot Park Directory. It's an amazing work. I think that you're going to all enjoy it, and it's going to be a resource for the next couple of years until we have the next publication from our Women's Club. I do ask that each one of you please keep Marcia in your thoughts and prayers as she recovers. This brings us to item 6.1, Discussion/Action/Authorization for City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with VIA Metropolitan Transit to Proceed with Design Location of Three Via Shelters Within Chauvinot Park and Grant a Bus Stop, Grant of Bus Stop Locations on Dezavala and Lock Hill Selma. Bill, I'm going to start with you, and then Leroy Alloway is going to come in.
Yeah, so I'll just do the quick background, and Leroy will do the presentation. We've discussed this before, but in 2014, VIA received a $2 million Surface Transportation Program grant, which is administered by the MPO, the Alamo Area MPO. The VIA Board of Trustees approved allocating funding to the different suburban cities and cities around here. We got an allocation of that. That's going to be covered in the slide. As part of that, we can do improvements such as bus stops and some of these sidewalks and certain different project improvements. We've proposed three. I think we briefed city council on that. We have then continued the coordination with VIA. In order to approve that, we've got to enter into an inter-local agreement with VIA. So, the purpose of this briefing is to have, or this discussion item, have VIA present this, will show you and illustrate that, and then, of course, this project's 100% funded through the VIA's STP-MM grant, as well as VIA's other funds. It's no cost to the city, and the action is to approve the city manager entering into a inter-local agreement. So, with that, we're ready to start, invite you up, Leroy, and then have him make a quick presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leroy Alloway. I'm the Director of Government and Community Relations for VIA Metropolitan Transit. With me this evening is Jeff Bazan, our government policy analyst, specifically assigned to work with our suburban member cities. So, just a way of background, VIA does cover 14 member cities, including Chauvinot Park, the city of San Antonio, and the others shown on the screen. At 1,213 square miles, we're the second-largest metropolitan transit agency in the state of Texas. Metro in Houston has just a little bit more than us, 1,280 square miles. I'm not going to go through all the statistics on the screen, but I do want to draw your attention to the fact that we have 7,200 bus stops and provide 42 million passenger trips on our paratransit and mainline bus service per year. Within Chauvinot Park, of course, we provide our fixed route service, our VIA transparatransit service, and then available to all residents within our service area is the VIA van pool As you can see on the screen, within the city of Chauvinot Park, we have 22 stops and an adjacent to the community, and it primarily served by Route 97. As the city manager mentioned, the Board of Trustees did receive, and VIA did receive, a Surface Transportation Program grant of $2 million from the local MPO. 20% of that was put in by VIA directly, and it has been allocated out to our suburban member cities, based upon ridership, mileage within the city. I'm glad to provide that detail, if you'd like, on the specific ways we develop this formula, but the Chauvinot Park allocation is approximately $141,000. Because these are federal funds through the Federal Transit Administration, we are limited in how we can spend this funding. It has to be in support of passenger amenities. By passenger amenities, we mean things like shelters, benches, the bus stopping pads, ADA compliance issues, signage, sidewalk connections, bike parking, lighting, those type of infrastructure improvements. What we're proposing this evening, having worked with the staff on this, is for three new shelters to be erected in Chauvinot Park. All will be built in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We'll be looking at solar lighting in each of these shelters, and the stop to be located at City Hall will also have a bus stopping pad built. The bus stopping pads are things we do deploy throughout our service area. These are about 12 inches deep of concrete, the standard design that we use, but it helps protect the roadways from wear and tear as the bus accelerates and decelerates from the stops. So, briefly walk through the stop IDs that we're proposing. Pond Hill at Northwest Military. As you can see on the rendering, it would be a shelter with the solar lighting, sidewalk length, sidewalk along the length of the island, and two curb ramps allowing for ADA access. Dezavala, west of Northwest Military. Shelter with the solar lighting, sidewalk with a curb ramp, and the bus stopping pad. One of the reasons we do want to install the sidewalk when we're installing the shelter is our buses do have the capability to kneel and deploy a shelter for, or, sorry, deploy a ramp for ADA access. We need to have the curb ramp and curb constructed at the same time to ensure we have that level boarding surface. And then, Lock Hill Selma and Dezavala, shelter with solar lighting and a sidewalk connection. With the shelters that we are proposing, we refer to as our next-generation shelters, these are modular, there's standard shelter we're using throughout our community, but what we'll also be able to do within Chauvinot Park is have the city seal embedded in the roof of each of these shelters, and then, of course, have the shelter illuminated at night with off-the-shelf solar components that we've been using. We have 30 of those solar shelters being piloted right now. We're hearing great response from the community. It is providing increased visibility, not only for passengers waiting, but also for our operators to be able to see, and generally, safety around the community. And then, just a preliminary cost estimate breakdown on each of these locations, grand total we're looking at is approximately $100,000. This does include $36,000 for the cost of the shelter itself, and the remaining $70,000 and change is really the earthwork and the construction that has to occur to be able to build the pads for the shelters, the sidewalks, and the curbs. With your favorable consideration tonight, our next step would then be to take this to our Board of Trustees for their April meeting for consideration. Assuming their favorable consideration as well, we would then move forward to procure the construction and be responsible for delivering these projects to you. There will be a balance of funds left, and we can identify future projects, working with city administration and yourselves, at a later date, subject to an amendment to the inter-local agreement. And with that, I'm glad to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Leroy? Mike?
Thank you. And the, I read through the agreement, y'all are putting them up, maintenance is ours. Do you have any historic numbers of what we need to plan on in our future budgets?
Specifically, maintenance of everything but the shelter would stay with the community. So, maintaining the sidewalks, maintaining the bus pad, I will say, in the 15 years that I've been in this community, having seen bus pads go in, I've never actually had to see them maintained in this length of time. So, it is a very, very sturdy product. But as far as the shelter maintenance, all of that will be handled by VIA. If there's a replacement of the shelter, any cleaning, our crews will be responsible for that for no cost to the city.
Thank you.
Is Republic Services, Bill, going to be responsible for the trash pickup at each one of these locations, and how often will that happen?
I believe that. That actually is handled by VIA as well, Mayor. So, when we have our shelters in place, then our maintenance schedule goes to almost a weekly basis, depending upon traffic, but at any point, if there's any problem with the shelter, by all means, anyone can either contact Mr. Bazan, myself, or our customer service line, and we will have crews come out. But we do handle all that maintenance.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions? Let's turn it back. Leroy, thank you very much. Bill, let's go back to you. Did we have any revisions in the document that we have before us, before we go to consideration?
Well, the current document has been updated. There was some semicolons, and we added "or" in the conditions associated with, I think it was subparagraph.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do we have a motion concerning the inter-local agreement with VIA Transit and the designation of, the design and location of three VIA shelters and the grant of bus stop locations on Dezavala and Lock Hill Selma?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the project and authorize the city manager to enter into the ILA with VIA.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Michelle. I do have one question coming back, Bill. It says the grant of bus stop locations on Dezavala and Lock Hill. I believe it was easy to see where all the locations are on Dezavala. What locations are we designating on Lock Hill Selma?
It's actually at the corner of Dezavala.
Just that location?
Yes, and it's actually on the Dezavala piece of that, and there's a description, there's a visual right there. Those are the three more frequent stop, we have the most frequent stops there, and we'll be looking at amending that in the future.
Okay, very good. Okay, do we have any discussion concerning this item? Mike?
Just a quick shout-out. This got started because Kenny Khan saw someone, a young fellow, standing in the rain, waiting for the bus, and came to us and asked us if we could do something. So, thank you to VIA for hearing our pleas, and thank you to Kenny for bringing it to our attention.
And, Bill, thank you very much for working with VIA for the last year and a half to get this project moving. I appreciate that. Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.2, Public Hearing, Receive Testimony and Comments from Members of the Public Regarding an Application for a Bank Savings and Loan Drive-Thru Facility, City Council Approval, Use for Huntington West Office Building 3424, Pizano Parkway, Chauvinot Park, Texas 78231. Bill, who's going to be the presenter?
I'm just going to give the background. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Costle real quick, just to remind the council that we received an original request for a drive-thru ATM from Bitter Blue on behalf of Lone Star Bank in July of 2016, and the final improvement of that occurred in 2016. And I'll just mention that in February, city received a request to move the bank and savings and loan drive-thru facility from one side of the building to the next, and after consulting with the attorney, we determined that we would need to go through the process again to approve a special permit, and that's what we've done. We've gone through planning zoning as appropriate. This is the public hearing that is required for the city council. We provided appropriate notice to the adjoining property owners, as well as public notice of the hearing. So, with that, Dan?
It's 6:54. We're going to start the public hearing section. Dan?
Dan, Council of Denton Communities, Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. Basically, what we're doing is moving this structure from the back of the building to the front of the property in order to facilitate a better position. It's just, it's not a good position to be in the back with this facility. So, Mr. Hill did a very good job of summarizing everything, and I'm just here to answer questions, I guess, at this juncture.
Okay. Do we have any citizen questions or comments? Okay, if there are no citizen questions or comments, we will close the public hearing section of the bill, of this item. It is now 6:55. Item 6.3, Discussion/Action Ordinance Number O2017006, Application for Bank Savings and Loan Drive-Thru Facility CC, Use for Huntington West Building 3424, Pizano Parkway, Chauvinot Park, Texas 78231. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Bill, do you want to have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is there's criteria established for special use permits in O10B1B2. I've included that in the packet there, and essentially, it's, the planning, zoning in city council basically makes a decision based upon safeguards that are necessary to protect adjoining property. That's the primary issue, the adjoining property. And so, our requested motion is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number O2017006?
So approved.
Got a motion from Allen Barrier to approve ordinance O2017006, Application for Bank Savings and Loan Drive-Thru Facility CC, Use for Huntington West Building 3424, Pizano's Parkway, Chauvinot Park, Texas 78231. And a second?
Second.
Michelle, a second of the motion. We're now open for discussion. We have any discussion? Mike?
Question for Chief Lacy. I remember when we first dealt with this, the question went to the chief, is, are there any security concerns? There was, there was none there. Are any securities concerns or policing concerns by moving it to the front? Thank you.
Do we have any other? Bob?
Well, that was actually, I brought that up in the July meeting because I felt like being behind the building, it could cause some issues. Is there any, is that what precipitated the move to the front, or is it more access to customers and better business having it in the front, Dan? I'm just curious.
Really, the, excuse me, Dan Costle, again, it's really the branding and more visibility and better use.
Don't you think it will be safer on the front?
I do, yes, sir, I do. I do.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? If there's no further discussion from council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.4, Public Hearing, Receive Testimony and Comments from Members of the Public Regarding Rezoning of a 22.44-acre tract of land located east of Northwest Military in the vicinity of Pond Hill Road and Loop 1604 from B1 to Business District to B2 Business District. Bill, who's going to be making our presentation?
Dan will, after I just kind of highlight the, our Darrell and Dan. Just from our administrative standpoint, we received a request on 1 March, I mean, in, I'm sorry, 16th February for, from Bitter Blue to rezone this 22 acres from B1 to B2. And that requires us to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission after a public hearing with proper notice and so forth, which occurred on 1 March, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a recommendation to approve the rezoning from B1 to B2. In your packet is the listing of tables of authorized uses from B1 to B2, and so, it comes before city council, also as a public hearing, which we're doing now, and the proper notices of public hearing have been provided. So, with that, I turn it over to Dan, who is the originator of the request, to explain.
Okay, it is now 6:58. We're going to begin the public hearing section.
This is actually, excuse me, again, Dan Costle, Denton Communities, thank you very much, and Darrell Lang. This is actually your official zoning map, and I turned this around conveniently here. The track we're all talking about is right, looking at, right here. That's the one we're requesting to rezone, B1 to B2, just to make it so you can put it in relationship to everything. We have requested this, we probably should have requested it seven, 12 years ago, whatever it was, and the reason we're requesting it today, and still is, this was kind of our last-reserve track. We really never paid any attention to it in terms of active marketing. We really never paid any attention to it in terms of active marketing because we wanted to save something for something special. We don't know what that something special is going to be yet, but we need, we would like to have the opportunity to have as much flexibility as we can. And B2 offers you B2, offers you B1, and offers you O1, doesn't offer you municipal utilities, but anyway. So Darrell is marketing the property now. We're running low on land in Chavino Park, which is good and bad. There's some demand for this property now. There hadn't been any demand for this property for quite some time. It has some topography issues related to access 1604. If you ever drove by it, it's like a cliff. So we'd like to have the opportunity to have all uses available to us that have been on your books for a while. We just went through Planning and Zoning Commission, I mean Planning Commission and Zoning Commission, went through a revision of their ordinances, ordinance relative to B1, B2, and all of them, quite frankly, and that's what we're requesting today. Darrell?
Hi, Mayor and members of city council. The lot, the Frost Bank site there at the northwest corner that you see the, it's platted, you know, that is being developed. So that was conveyed from Frost Bank to a local entity approximately 45 days ago. They're going to be developing a Class A office and retail building there. We've met with Mr. Hill and Chief Naughton, just showing them preliminary plans. That's really going to put this track on the map. It also sets a demarcation point, it sets a drive south of there. So it's setting up the rest of this track, and we want to be ready to be able to respond and look for those uses that are compatible with, you know, this area. It's going to be expensive land, this is not cheap land, so the uses are going to be commensurate with that. But I just wanted to point it out that you will be seeing development happening right there on the Frost Bank site, probably within, you know, 90 days.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the citizens? Dave, please come forward to give your name and your address and...
David Pierce, 118 Fawn Drive. Forgive me, I, could you give me a quick rundown of what's the difference between B1 and B2?
Would you, Curtis, would you put up from item 6, 6-9, the different uses?
Yeah, the table of uses.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
He's just going to scroll through B1, and then we'll go scroll right through B2.
Good evening.
You had highlighted on B2, which ones are the additions, or all of them on B2 are on top of these?
All of the ones that are on B1 are permitted in B2. So B2 is an addition to B1.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. MJ Smoot, 101 Chavino Drive. Thank you all for your service. I spoke against the approval of the rezoning from B1 to B2, but as I, at the last P&amp;Z meeting, but as I understand it, I think that train has already left the track, the train has already left the station, and I think that that's a done deal, you are going to approve the B2. But what I would ask your sincere consideration about, and it goes to Dave and Dagny's question, I looked at the list carefully, and I believe some of the items that are included in B2 that are not in B1 are hotel motel, 15-screen movie theater, as Dan and Darrell explained at last meeting, eight movie screen theaters are no longer profitable, also funeral homes. And so those are three of the things that I personally would not like to see, and I would really like you to sincerely consider before approving any one of those particular items. And if you, I'm sure that all of you know the location. It's right there on Pond Hill, where we have that brand-new entrance to the brand-new fabulous garden homes that I think are starting upward of $300,000. The development has already started.
No, it's on the other side.
It's on the other side.
It's not next to Beer County.
No, it's behind McAllisters and Starbucks.
McAllisters, okay, thank you. So then that's going to back up to Huntington. So, is that right? It's between Huntington?
Yeah.
But at any rate, in Chavino Park City, I still would like you to sincerely consider not approving hotel motel, 15-screen movie theater, and funeral home. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do you want to address the question that she raised? Dan?
Just, all those I think are special use. I know the, a couple of the items are for sure special use.
Yeah, I think every one of them requires city council.
We would have to come back to you as a, as a body to approve that. This is also east of Northwest Military. We have buffers in place on Huntington, already anticipating some commercial use, so B1 and B2, it really doesn't matter per se. It just allows us a little more, actually allows Darrell more flexibility in trying to find something that will really work here. And we don't know, we might come back with you, with some crazy idea and try to change your zoning ordinance someday to see if we got some, something else to work with. So it's kind of an, we like to open the book a little better on this piece of property, is what I would pose off to.
Okay, do we have any other citizen questions or comments? Dagny?
Thank you, Mayor. Dagny Florine, 111 Post Oakway. Our family lives on the other side of Chavino Park, so this doesn't really impact us. What impacted us was the development occurred on the corner of Heebner and Lock Hill. Now initially, we had heard that there was going to be a Church's Fried Chicken there, and Chavino Creek raised holy hana about that. That was not acceptable. As it turned out, now it's nooners, they've got a convenience store, car wash, and certainly we have the daycare center and such, but there were a lot of people who were opposed to putting a gas station there, in part because of the Edwards Aquifer, and yet Chavino Park agreed to it anyway. And I know there was some zoning kerfluffle back then, that zoning was changed, and I don't know the details.
Are you going to talk about this project, or are we going to talk about nooners?
I'm going to talk about being nervous about zoning changes. If there really aren't that many differences, then why change what we already have? It suggests that perhaps there's already something in mind. The movie theater with a parking lot, I think, would be a real problem because crime increases when you have parking lots. So I would strongly encourage that you think seriously about what you're doing, because a lot of people are not happy with what happened on the other corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, if you could address some of those issues.
Mayor, if I could just ask MJ, it was hotel, movie theater, what was the third?
Funeral home.
Funeral home. Okay. I would just say that in the, in the B2, the movie theater is a CC use, so there's a council required approval. And I don't mean to, I'm just telling you the facts, that the hotel is already an authorized use in the B1. So the hotel is not a B2 use, and I'm trying to see if that is an authorized, if that's a CC use in B1 as well.
No, it is, it is a permitted use without city council approval.
Right, so there's not a CC use on hotel motel on B1. But it's, but as it's currently zoned, you could put a hotel motel on that piece of And then the funeral home is a CC use as well.
Okay. Bill, could you clarify our position on the Edwards Aquifer and the ability of the project to go in at Heebner and Lock Hill-Soma? I don't believe that we had any authority with that Edwards Aquifer, if you could clarify that, please.
Yeah, TCEQ governs that associated with, over the Edwards Aquifer. They have controls in it, and I'm not an expert in it, but it requires triple-layer protection associated with that. Just as a reminder, that property was in the ETJ, and the development associated with that and those vested rights were determined to have been occurred the last time it was platted, which was five or six years prior to our consideration. So the, no decision that the city made really affected the development, whether that development occurred or it did not occur in the Edwards Aquifer.
Okay.
Over the Edwards Aquifer.
Do we have any other citizen comments or questions? Okay, if there are no other citizen questions or comments, it's now 7:11. We're going to close the public hearing section of the meeting, and we're going to go to item 6.5, discussion action ordinance number O-2017-007, rezoning a 22.46 acre tract of land located east of Northwest Military Highway in the vicinity of Pond Hill Road and Loop 1604 from B1 Business District to B2 Business District. This is the first reading. Bill?
I don't have any further summary associated with that at this point.
Okay, do we have a motion concerning item 6.5?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle Ross to approve ordinance number O-2017-007, rezoning a 22.46 acre tract of land located east of Northwest Military Highway in the vicinity of Pond Hill Road and Loop 1604 from B1 Business District to B2 Business District. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alan has seconded the motion, we're now open for discussion.
The only thing I would say is that because it's a city council approval on those items, and I also like the fact that if you go to B2, we add boutique hotels, which I'd rather have instead of the Motel 6. Nothing against Motel 6, but you know, so I'm fine with it.
You're out of order on mentioning Motel 6. Have that stricken from the record if possible. Okay, do we have any further discussion? Brayhan?
Do you have any idea of what you are trying to bring in there and market to bring in anything that might have motivated a change in the zoning, or was it just to, as I think you indicated, broaden the opportunity?
Simply that, broaden the opportunity. We have literally zero discussions with anybody on this track. We've been so busy working with the development group that purchased the Frost Bank track. That one only took one and a half years for a little 1.78 acre track. So no, at this point, you know, nothing.
Okay.
And the second question is probably best for the city manager. What was the breakdown? I wasn't able to attend the March Planning and Zoning meeting where they voted on this. Was it a unanimous vote?
I'm pretty sure it was.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thanks.
Okay, Darrell, do we have any other questions or comments? We have, Mike?
Just to let you know, we've heard your comments, and so if any of those items, even though the hotel may not require CC, if I'm on council when that happens, we'll put it up for a public hearing. So none of those will be adopted without a public hearing, if I have anything to say about it.
Thank you, Darrell. Any other questions or comments? There being no further questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.6, public hearing, receive testimony and comments from members of the public regarding proposed amendments to City of Chavino Park ordinances, Chapter 6, building and building regulations, and Chapter 36, zoning and zoning to consider changes to carports. Bill, you want to start us off before we introduce Mike Jansen, I suppose? I'll recognize Mike as a co-presenter if he's to be included.
Yeah, this originally came to, as directed, it was actually Mayor Pro Tim Ross's agenda item. Council in November of 2016 voted to have planning and zoning review allowing carports to be substituted for garage space, open to the street, loaded in the front, and be freestanding. And in addition, ordinance should specify the type and structures allowed. We reported that out in the December Planning and Zoning meeting, and that, and the P&amp;Z at the time voted to table the item, was further considered. We had some meetings in December, and the bottom line is, on 1 February, which was at a P&amp;Z meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing, and there was discussion, and there was a proposal for an ordinance language at that point in time, but city, the P&amp;Z took no action, and the motion died. It was brought back in before the March 1st P&amp;Z meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a recommendation to approve the language which is seen in the attachment that you have there. I will just turn it over to Mike at this point in time. If you, if you want to add any more, I can summarize the changes that were made. Okay. Two primary changes were the definitions...
I guess we're going to start the public hearing section. I thought you were going to make a few comments, but we're, we're opening the public hearing section, it is now 7:16.
Okay.
No, no, you can continue your presentation, please.
So, so the first thing that was done was that we, the definition of carport needed to be adjusted, and looking at several cities' other examples and coming to a consensus, you can see that the, the definition of a carport was modified slightly. I think there's nothing contentious in that, I think that's helpful. And there is some confusion in terms of what's the difference between a carport and a port de cachere, and we added a definition of that, which is really attached to the structure and open on no more than three sides, and you can see that, again, we did some research on that definition. Think it's a pretty good definition, I mean, there's a number of different versions that you could have done. Essentially, the biggest change is that the carports were not previously allowed to be freestanding. The Planning and Zoning Commission came up with this proposal. It allowed freestanding, there was a lot of discussion, freestanding carports were be allowed in the rear area, and, but they were not to be visible from the street, or, and essentially, the bottom line is they're to be regulated as an accessory building, not visible from the street. All carports are conforming with building setback lines and structural regulations and 90-degree front-loaded, so again, it's not terribly complex. I think that Mayor Pro Tim Ross had proposed the consideration of a number of other potential options for carports that was considered but not adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the version that they provided. I don't know.
Okay, Mike, do you have anything that you'd like to add before we open up to questions from the citizens? Do we have any citizen questions or comments concerning this item? Come on forward, Dave.
David Pierce, again, 118 Fawn. I don't have any skin in the game here, but I looked this up, in Austin, they had a lot of trouble with this because people were building carports and then eventually closing them in and filling them full of junk, so maybe that's something to think about, but like you said, they're not going to be visible from the streets, so I guess it doesn't matter, but I'm just letting you know what they went through up in Austin City Council. Thank you.
Thank you much. Do we have any other citizens who would like any, adding any comments or have any questions? MJ?
MJ Smoot, 101 Chavino Drive. I am for limited government, small government, and I don't really, you know, I don't have any expertise in this area, but it just has the feel to me of HOA, and I just don't know, is it really city business? I mean, I know making ordinances is, but I just would like to avoid an HOA feel to an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to add before we end the public hearing section of this meeting?
I was just going to respond to MJ's comment. I don't know if you want me to do that now, or if a, if a city council member wants to bring it up, but...
No, you can comment now.
But as you all know, we don't allow any carports now unless they're side or rear-loaded, and so the requests we got from city council...
No, we don't allow it, yeah.
They have to be side or rear, they can't be front-loaded.
And they have to be attached.
And they have to be attached, and in addition, we don't allow any garages to be front-loaded. And so I guess to planning and zoning, when we consider this item, it didn't make sense if you could have a front-loaded carport if you couldn't have a front-loaded garage. It just, we have side-loaded, 90-degree loaded garages for a reason, it's probably aesthetics, but we have, we have that ordinance on the books, and so that's why we didn't consider that. But we didn't think it was unreasonable to grant citizens, especially in A1, the ability to have a rear carport. We, they're not visible from the street, and we thought that would be a good solution to give A1 residents, and obviously it applies to A3 as well, but A3 lots normally may not be big enough to put a carport in their yard, but some may be, so that's why we came up where we, that's why we ended up where we did. And I, I guess on the definitions, we really... And obviously, it applies to A three as well, but A three lots normally may not be, be big enough to put a carport in their yard, but some may be. So that's why we came up where we, that's why we ended up where we did. And I, I guess on the definitions, we really struggled on the definitions. The port de cachere definition is very long and drawn out. We really had a struggle because it didn't have a definition before, and the definition of a carport and port de cachere were like almost interchangeable, and we didn't like that. So that, in effect, that's why we ended up where we did.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Do we have any other citizen questions or comments? If we have no other citizen questions or comments, it's now seven twenty-one, and we're going to close the public hearing section of the meeting. Item six point seven, discussion action ordinance number oh twenty seventeen zero zero eight, proposed amendments to City of Chavino Park ordinances, Chapter six, building and building regulations, and Chapter thirty-six, zoning to consider change in carports. This is our first reading. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No, Mayor.
Okay. There being no discussion from, or no presentation from the city manager, do we have a motion concerning the, the item?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle Ross to approve ordinance number twenty seventeen zero zero eight, proposed amendments to City of Chavino Park ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, building and building regulations, and Chapter thirty-six, zoning to consider changes in carports. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alan has seconded the motion. We're now open for discussion.
Mayor?
Michelle?
I'd like to clarify something. It was said that this was like my pet project. I don't have any skin in this game either. I was contacted by a number of residents, one of them Eric, who lives on Northwest Military, because he bought a house where the garage had already been retrofitted into living space. He had a carport that was separate from the house before we ever had ordinances, apparently, and it fell down in a storm, and then he wanted to be able to put it up there because of how his lot is designed. He had limited amounts of, or area that he could do it, and so he asked for some options. And then I went around and asked some other people who also said they didn't understand the carports. I personally don't have a carport. I may have one. It'll be attached. I'm not worried about it. It's not a personal thing. It's, five people came in contact, that I talked to, were interested in being able to have flexibility with carports on their property. I see nothing wrong with it, being in real estate, as long as it's built aesthetically pleasing, as long as it isn't like the kind that you get down at, you know, some store, box store, where it's like metal with a fabric top. If it matches the house and is, is consistent with our neighborhood, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Mary Ann?
I just wanted to clarify, you said that, city manager, you said that the carports, port de cachets, this whole issue is going to be regulated akin to accessory buildings? Is that correct?
The car, the, the freestanding carport would be.
Okay. How many residents came to speak at Planning and Zoning Commission on this issue?
Mike, if you would come forward, please. Mike Janson, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you for the introduction. In, in a previous meeting, we had one speak in favor of it, and at our last meeting, when we took action, we had one that asked us to consider a front loaded carport because they had converted their garage to living space. As you all know, according to ordinances, it's illegal to convert your garage to living space unless you provide for another garage. And so I'm assuming that citizen was unaware of that regulation. But anyway, there were, there were two citizens. One, one liked it, one didn't. One asked for front loaded, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But they both liked it, but one wanted front loading.
One of them wanted the front loading, yeah. And the problem was that, I'm not sure where this citizen lived. I don't want to know the name, but, but I think the problem was a setback. There wasn't room to put a ninety-degree loaded carport where the garage had been converted. And so they'd be having to build it in a setback, which, which we, you never been able to do. So in effect, that was a problem.
Okay, very good. A couple of points as far as.
I just have another question.
Oh, one more. Yes, I'm sorry.
And the, the vote from the Planning and Zoning, was that like the last issue? Was that also a unanimous vote?
No, it was not. We, we tried to bring this up to Planning and Zoning. The first time we discussed it, we were unanimous. The second time it came up, I asked for a, for a motion, and I didn't get a motion, so it died because of a motion. And at this last meeting, it came up, there were, there were seven people in attendance. The vote was four to three. I had to vote. First time I've ever had to vote, so I had to vote at that meeting.
Okay. Mary Ann?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of points of clarification. Yeah, I've been with Planning and Zoning Commissioner on city council for the last twenty years. During that entire time, I believe that we have always prohibited carports of the type that had been discussed. So it is not something that's new and that we're creating new regulations in our community. These are longstanding regulations concerning carports in the community, saying decades ago, we don't really want carports in Chavino Park. Second thing, I want to clarify for Mike Janson, also going back to the discussions that we've had on carports that predate him as the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the reason, and it doesn't have anything to do with aesthetics. It had to do with the recommendations from the then-police chief that having front loaded garages that are open is an invitation for people to know what's in your garage and for possible theft. And they, they had taken the position that the side loading helped us from a police manpower standpoint to keep our community safe and to keep people from prying, from preying on their neighbors. So just as a clarification on the reason that we do this, we don't regulate things in our community based upon the way that it looks nice, because we don't have the authority under state law to regulate aesthetics as a general rule. So, that being said, do we have any other discussion? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alan.
Mike.
It troubles me to consider changing a longstanding rule that everyone's lived with and built around and worked with on the basis of just a couple of people wanting to, to correct something that they may have done illegally, especially when planning and zoning was clearly not in favor of this. So I would urge that we don't approve this ordinance.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
Well, I would like to say.
Michelle?
That we don't assume that people did anything illegally because Eric and two other people bought houses that were already done, and that's how they bought them. And so it wasn't because they did anything illegal. It, it may have been done illegally before then, but I don't even know if we had an ordinance forever against carports. I mean, we don't know if a house was built in nineteen sixty-three if we had an ordinance about carports.
My understanding is we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussion from council? If we have no further discussion from council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails three to two. Item six point eight, public hearing, received testimony and comments from members of the public regarding proposed amendments to Chapter thirty-six, Article four, Tables three, four, and five of the permitted uses of zoning districts O one, B one, and B two. Bill, do you want to make a comment before we start the public hearing section, or do you want to start the public hearing section?
Let's start the public hearing.
Okay, it is now seven thirty, seven twenty-nine.
Just as a background, in the budget process, we go and review our goals, and then we create objectives for the budget year. In the sixteen seventeen budget process, city council adopted an objective to review and update the table of uses for new business opportunities O one, B one, and B two. So the idea is, are there any other uses that we could add? That was kind of the discussion and where it went, and then make sure that we have the appropriate uses in the right categories. So we, in the Planning and Zoning meeting in January ninth, they held discussions, we introduced the topic. There were several listings that we identified that appeared to be incorrectly grouped together, and some errors in grammar and typos, et cetera, that were identified. There was some discussion, a couple of recommendations for what we could add. Anyway, example, one of the, one of the action items was to move Delic, contestant, deli from the B one, I mean, B two to B one use, and it was later determined that the listing of a deli was actually redundant, not needed. P and Z considered this again in the February meeting, and we conducted a public hearing. There wasn't a lot of input into the public hearing. There was discussion that occurred on possible uses and where the usage should go, whether it should be B one or B two. There wasn't a lot of discussion on the O one. No action was taken during the, this February meeting. Additional changes were discussed and made, and this was staffed to the attorney a couple of times. Bottom line is, on March first, P and Z considered the latest changes associated with that language as you see here, and they then made a recommendation to clarify. So just to summarize the changes, in O one, there was one administrative change. You want to go to the O one, and we highlight that. And you can see where it said required approval, and all the other listings, it only simply has CC, and striking required an approval just makes it consistent with the remainder of the other changes. There was no additions, no deletions or edits in the O one. Going to B two, there were six administrative grammar error, I mean, changes. One change in the size of fitness center, and one clarification in terms of outdoor boarding for kennels. So you can see right there, the fitness center, previously it was limited to two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, six thousand square feet, which if you think about it, it's, it's not that big for a fitness center. That was a recommendation, and we received some input associated that from Bitter Blue, and that was adopted. The other ones were, you know, product instead of produce. We added up on pickup. We deleted the ore and put a slash consistent with what's going on. Under pet shop, we added no outdoor boarding. You know, typically, you don't have boarding at a pet shop anyway, but we, we just want to make sure it was clear that it was no, no outdoor boarding associated with that. That was the clarifications in B one. And in B two, there were three administrative issues, and just, you can see this very clearly where, if you look under bicycle repair and sales, it was actually on the wrong line item, and we just hit the return, and it was a formatting issue, and that, that's what most of these were. On animal clinic, on B two, you had no outside operations, but in fact, you know, the days of all of vet, doesn't board outside, but they have a dog run. And so just to clarify that, we thought it was reasonable, and we already have an existing use associated with that. We clarified it from no outside operations to no outside boarding, because that's where you really get the complaints of leaving your dog out all night and it barks continuously. And I already mentioned Delic, Delic contestant, that was just deleted there because it's already covered under restaurants and food services, and the rest of those are formatting issues that were just, needed to be on a separate line by themselves. There were two size differences. One was the, one was the fitness center. So we made the, the change in the fitness center, so any fitness center greater than six thousand feet, and again, I just make note that it, that is a CC use, so if there was someone that wanted to put a fitness center here, they would have to get city council approval. And then more input that we have on the theaters, the theater size was already authorized to be eight, but the change was made to twelve. And finally, there was sports courts, there was a series, I think if you go down, Curtis, one more. We had a limitation, I guess it's on the, on the up, we had a limitation that said you could not have, okay, tennis, basketball, volleyball, racquetball, hand court was indoor only. We have tennis courts that are outdoor already, so again, we struck the indoor only, it didn't make sense. So the bottom line, I think that the P and Z did consider adding a lot of uses, but there wasn't any added uses. And then, other than the Delic contestant, which was only deleted because it was redundant already. So not a lot of significant changes in terms of the grand scheme of things, and I'll pause there.
Okay. Mike, do you have any supplemental information you'd like to share before we open it up for citizen questions?
I don't really think so. This did pass unanimously. We really didn't have a whole lot of discussion on it. The one item we had the most discussion on, just full disclosure to you all, was several members of Planning and Zoning thought two convenience stores was enough in our city, and we considered, I guess, for some extended period, language, or we considered doing away with convenience stores. But advice to council, we thought that'd be difficult to do since we already have two. If one was damaged in a tornado, they couldn't rebuild if it wasn't a protected use. And so ultimately, we decided it's a CC use anyway. I think everybody has their own opinion if two is enough or two not enough, but we, we decided not to take action on that. But that's, that was really, most of our discussion was regarding convenience stores.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have any citizen comments or questions? David?
Was there a, did you just mention public storage? I was just saying.
Well, I saw on the list, you had public storage and then auto rental, and those are two things that I would never want to see in Chavino Park. That's just my own personal opinion. They just seem to, to bring in a lot more traffic and kind of mess up the place. Just my opinion, because I've stored stuff, and when I couldn't find a place, I had to go way off, and it just attracts people from all over. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other citizen questions or comments? Okay, we have no other citizen questions or comments. It is now seven thirty-six. We're going to close the public hearing section of the meeting, and we're going to proceed to item six point nine, discussion action ordinance number oh twenty seventeen zero zero nine, regarding proposed amendments to Chapter thirty-six, Article four, Tables three, four, and five of the permitted uses in zoning districts O one, B one, and B two. First reading, Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion concerning ordinance number oh twenty seventeen zero zero nine?
I move its passage, or adoption.
Okay. We have a motion from Mike to approve.
Hold on a second.
And we have Bob with a second. We're now open for discussion. Does anybody have any discussion items? Okay, a couple of, a couple of points just from an historical standpoint. Twenty years ago, Chavino Park had one district. It was residential, and then in addition to residential, we had some city property, which really, we didn't zone as city property, and we had AT&T. And we hadn't really defined AT&T as a business district or anything, we just had AT&T. Twenty years ago, we entered into a master plan development discussion, negotiation with Denton Communities, and before we could allow Denton Communities to enter into our ETJ agreement and to bring everything in, we got with our city attorneys, and we negotiated out probably the most draconian business districts for B one and B two at that time. Everything was intended to be an extremely clean industry in Chavino Park, whether it was B one or B two. The parking ratios for B one and B two were the same whether you were in one district or the other, and over that, over the ensuing twenty years, we have steadily extended permission for additional uses of property in Chavino Park. That has been done basically through the, the guidance of our Planning and Zoning Commission, kind of like extending permission from parents to a teenager, and we now have the current iteration, which is still probably the most restrictive zoning limitation uses of any community in Bear County. So when we're talking about changes in Chavino Park, basically, anything that may be considered offensive has a continuing leash on it, a rope holding it back from city council approval. And the balance of these are things that you can look at in every business district in San Antonio and say, golly, these things that you've restricted to B two, they're already in B one all over San Antonio, so please consider that. The Planning and Zoning Commission and all the prior councils have been very thoughtful in the limitations on the type of uses that have been permitted. Okay, does anybody have any discussion that they'd like to add after my comments? Okay, Mike?
While I don't find the fact that things are wrong right now, so we need to change the ordinance to accommodate them to be a convincing argument, I also know who the city manager was when some of those places were built. And so I think we need to recognize that we allowed things to happen that we, under those statutes, we shouldn't have. And because this is primarily a cleanup ordinance, I think it's a good thing and urge its adoption.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, there being no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six ten, discussion action, setting the dates for. for the City Sponsored Events, Independence Day, National Night Out, Holiday Event. Bill?
At last month's meeting, we brought forward a proposed date for the 4th of July. Just as a background, last year, we brought this as an agenda item to take a look at and designate all four events well in advance. And we didn't do that this year. We felt like we needed to finalize 4th of July. Subsequent to the discussion, there wasn't consensus. There were some hard questions asked by council and that, that agenda item was tabled with the directive to go back and, and do a little more homework and make sure we had it tracking. So the bottom, the first thing we did was we called the Carnival Ride contractor and who basically didn't want to conduct the event on the 4th of July and wanted to do it on, on a Saturday, which basically leaves you the 1st or the 8th. We did talk to the committee that, that coordinates this and their preference was the 1st based upon the fact that, and then staff took a look at this, and if you're looking at, well, if the 4th is eliminated, the 1st and the 8th, doing it prior to the 4th of July makes more sense than doing it after the 4th of July. That would be our recommendation. At the same time, we recognized, well, let's go ahead and address the National Night Out and the December Holiday Event to where we can finalize that and, and work through that. So again, traditionally, we always do the National Night Out on the first Tuesday of October. That's October 3rd. This year, I think everyone assumes that, but we hadn't taken any action. I wanted to formalize that. The December event is, we've done it twice now. This would be the third one. Has been on the first weekend, first Saturday of December. We did provide a calendar and, you know, the 2nd would be that date. It would seem to make sense. However, the 2nd is early in December and I wanted to just make sure that we were, we finalized that. In discussion with the folks that have helped coordinate the December event in the past, their preference has been the 2nd. I don't think staff has a, there's not a significant difference between the 2nd and the 9th as far as we're concerned. Anything after Thanksgiving, it really becomes the Christmas holiday, December season anyway. So again, we're looking to approve the proposed dates. The recommendation is on the 1st of July, the 1st of July, the 3rd of October, and the 2nd of December. And just as an administrative note, we have placed a similar agenda item in the future reoccurring agenda items so that we will get ahead of this next year and we'll, we'll finalize that. So subject to your questions to me, that is where we stand.
Okay. Do we have a motion concerning setting the three remaining four annual events for Chavano Park?
I approve the proposed date for the city sponsored events, July 1st, October 3rd, and December 2nd.
Okay. Do we have a second? Bob is second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. Mike?
Well, I would move an amendment to that motion to set the July 4th on the 4th of July and the holiday event on the 9th of December.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to substitute for, as opposed to amendment, because you've changed two of the three dates. We have a motion to substitute the July the 8th, or July the 4th, October the 3rd, and December the 9th. We're now open for discussion on the motion to substitute. Mike?
Okay. July the 4th is July the 4th. I mean, we're celebrating the independence of the United States. If one particular contractor can't, can't show up then, then there's other contractors that we can meet with. We've got plenty of time to do that. And July the, or December the 2nd is, as Bill pointed out, a little bit close on Thanksgiving and a little bit far from the, the rest of the December events. I know we're trying to avoid calling it a Christmas holiday. So that's why I think it, it would make more sense to go with July the 4th and December the 9th.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, there's been no further discussion. All in favor of the supplemental motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion fails. Okay, we are now back to the primary motion. Do we have any discussion on the primary motion? There being no discussion on the primary motion, all in favor of setting the remaining four events to approve the proposed dates for the city sponsored events of Independence Day on July the 1st, National Night Out on October the 3rd, and our holiday event on December the 2nd. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item 611, Discussion Action Establishing a City Policy Appointing Citizens to Steering Groups Responsible for Plan, for Planning City Sponsored Events. Alderman Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask this to be put on the agenda just to figure out how we get these volunteer committees and to assuage Ms. Cots's concerns. This is not adding any layers to the bureaucracy, just asking how do we go about deciding who's, who's going to be on these committees, citizen committees. So I had a recommended policy and with my past experience of getting policies passed, I didn't ask Bill to write up a resolution or a formal policy. We can do that if, if this gets by. But basically, I would move that we make the city manager responsible for choosing the citizens, recruiting them, and supervising them, the volunteers working the, these events, and just leave it up to him.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do I have a second?
A second.
Mary Ann is seconded. We're now open for discussion.
I have a question.
Michelle? Mary Ann, I'll let you. Is this a procedural question or is it a question that goes toward discussion?
Question that goes toward discussion.
Okay, then we'll recognize Michelle first. Okay?
Okay. I'm not sure why we would do this. In the past, we've set up committees and we've had a process to put people on committees, but that is a council decision. And if council decides it wants to keep certain events at the council level to coordinate, then there's nothing wrong with that. I don't think the city manager ever picks who goes on committees. That's always decided by us at the council and I don't think that should change.
Okay. Mary Ann, I'll recognize you now.
Well, I, I guess I would just ask, I don't remember ever putting a, voting on it as a, as a council member of who goes on these committees. That, that was my question is how do these committees? I'm just assuming that people who want to help go and help. And they go down to the city manager or they knock on somebody's door and say, hey, I'm here and I'll be glad to help and I've done it in the past. And if you need anything, let me know. That's what I'm assuming is happen, happening. I don't remember us as a council ever, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we voted that, you know, Maggie would do something or whoever else would do something. You know, it's, it's usually people volunteer and they, and they go to get involved. Am I incorrect?
No, I was referring to the current committee process that we have, you know, where we do the application process and then it comes to council to review. But for these events, it's always been, because that was one of my campaign issues, it's always been something that we've kind of run at a council level. And then you're right, we put it in the newsletter and people sign up and work on it.
All I know is that at a council level, we agree to the money.
Yes.
And that's, and then that's it. And I'm, I don't know how it all gets done. I just know it gets done. So I guess my question was to the city manager in terms of how does it all get done?
Great question. But it does get done. So I guess the, the way I can describe it is it's, it's, as you've kind of characterized, it's volunteer, self-selected. And that's the way it's gone. I mean, I believe that there was a action proposed, and I can't remember if it was part of the budget process three years ago, or whether it was just an action or a, or a good idea, but there was a idea that we would do a city, we did national, we've been doing National Night Out for a couple of times. That's probably where it started, as I recall. We had National Night Out and then there was a proposal, should we do something more than just the Neighborhood Watches? Should we do something at City Hall? Then there was some folks that volunteered to do that. I know the mayor was, the old mayor was involved in terms of cooking. And then there was an action to do that. And then I think it evolved into, that's a good idea, let's do a holiday event. And then the, the core group of those folks then became the volunteers associated with that. And it takes, it takes solicitation of donations and activities that occurred, which probably is best done by the citizens associated with that. And then, and then I believe after that, then there was the idea, let's do this, let's formalize this next year to four events. And there was an actual selection of the dates and then it went forward. You know, it's, it, originally, those folks self-selected themselves. Like you could say the same thing in terms of National Night Out. National Night Out's a citywide event and the Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, again, I don't think has ever been formally designated, but we know that Etta Fanning has taken that role. And she has husband that, working with the police chief. That hasn't been appointed either and the Neighborhood Watch has assisted with the, the National Night Out. So, so there hasn't been a process formally. I'm not sure that there is a significant issue. I mean, there, it, it does help, and actually Xena and, and I do a lot to guide and then direct and then to understand these volunteers. What are they actually going to volunteer for and what roles they have? Xena does the majority of this work to where she attends the subcommittee meetings and then they, like all volunteer actions, it's very informal and they divvy up their responsibilities and staff provides oversight to that. And I don't know if that helps or not, but that's from our perspective.
And we don't have any issues where anybody's coming in saying, here's a receipt for X amount of dollars. And there, we, we just haven't had issues, or have we, with people spending money and then getting reimbursed from the city? It's all within the budget. The members are working together. How does that work? Is that a problem or is it not?
Xena, you can correct me if I'm wrong. There hasn't been a particular problem. We know we have a budget. Could it be more precise and formalized? Yes. But the nature of these things is that it's hard to herd cats, you know, and I'm not saying that there's a lot of cats out there, but you know, there's different opinions and different ideas and it's done by consensus. And so we know there's a budget. We generally speaking, don't plan it down to the great detail, you know, two months in advance. I mean, that has probably never happened. And it's hard to, because a lot of it comes together at the end.
And we don't have issues where people are, or do we, where people want to get involved and can't get involved because there's kind of a core group that's been doing it and can't open it up? Or we just haven't had any other folks interested?
I wouldn't say that there hasn't been any friction associated with that, frankly. And not necessarily with the Christmas event, not necessarily with the 4th of July event at all. I mean, there, there might have been some friction as the Arbor, the Tree Committee has tried to figure out what is going on and how that role is going on. But I think we've worked through it and we've got a fantastic program. There's, as, as you look at anything, you can improve processes. And I know after the first holiday event, we did an after-action review. We looked at what we did well and what we didn't do well. And it's a process. From this standpoint, from the staff's standpoint, it's not one of those things that, the more volunteers we have and the more, what works, works. When it, when it goes, that's helpful. You know, could there be, if you had someone completely grouped and they took a look at it completely, they might come up with different ideas associated with it. There's a number of ways to do this. I don't, I don't know. It's probably not perfect, but it's done well so far. And staff will be open to however council wants to direct that.
Okay.
Just one last question. Do you, as city manager, speaking on behalf of staff, recommend a change or any kind of new way of going forward? Or are you okay with how it is? What is your recommendation?
I would say that frankly, that if, if there was going to be a selection process, it should go through council, a formal selection process. I don't think it's necessary that there's a formal selection process. I do think that there ought to be an opportunity for fresh ideas. And, and I think the way this thing has occurred, at least with the Tree Committee and the Arbor Earth Day, is that those agendas have been posted and there's been opportunities to, to bring up ideas. The events that we have seem to be fairly successful. Those, there's been some changes. I mean, this program that we have for Arbor Earth Day is twice as much as we had in the previous one. And a lot of that came from input from the Tree Committee. And so that's good. And so if there's a process associated with that, we're not opposed to that.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? Mike?
Couple of, number one, let's correct something. We do have a policy. You, you signed a policy appointing the chief of police as the point of contact for NNO. We've adopted a policy that the Tree Committee is, is responsible for Arbor Day. So that leaves 4th of July and the holiday. And what brought this up is in the previous discussion item in, or the, the summary sheet in the discussion, city manager says the volunteer committee prefers July 1st as well. I was unaware that there was a volunteer committee. And so I, that caused me to bring this item up. How do we get this volunteer, the, the committees? My major concern in wanting to hand this formally to the city manager for his supervision is that they're entrusted with $10,000 of taxpayer funds. And if someone goes out and buys something and comes back and presents a, a receipt saying, I've bought this for this event, here I need to be reimbursed, what you've got is that citizen basically encumbering public funds. And that's the job of the city manager. And so all I'm trying to do is say, city manager, it's, it's yours on these two events. I want you managing that money, not, not the citizens that are, are, whoever gets appointed or whoever ends up being, being on the committee. So those are my two concerns, is that we've already established a policy for the, for half of these events. And we're talking about $10,000 of government money. So I would recommend that we do adopt a policy.
Okay, Michelle?
We don't need to worry about a policy for the money. It is handled out of staff. When we have meetings, we go over what's going to be purchased. There's a budget. And nobody goes out and spends $10,000 or any amount of money. In fact, when I do all of the crafts, it costs about $2,500 and I underwrite it, as do most of the people on the committee. So that's really not an issue.
Okay. Any other items? I would like to commend Xena and Michelle and the other members who have worked so hard on these events. They are part of the lifeblood of this community. It's one of the things that attracts young people to come to Chavano Park. They look at it and they say, golly, this is someplace special for my children. It's the type of place that we grew up in when we were small children. And it's something that is so seldom offered. And I want to commend the ladies that have been involved in this process for their tireless work and their hours of dedication to provide this to the overall community. It has been a breath of fresh air to have this in a community that is surrounded by the seventh largest city in America. This is something that you don't find every place. And it's something that I think Bill has done a great job of supervising and directing Xena to oversee on behalf of the community. And, and until it breaks, I hope that we don't fix it. Any other discussion?
Point of order there. That, that was debate, which is inappropriate for the chair.
Okay. Actually, the chair gets to comment on all of the items in the same way that you get to comment on items. And I'm going to overrule you, but thank you. Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of establishing a city policy appointing citizens to steering groups responsible for planning city sponsored events, say aye. citizens to steering groups responsible for planning city-sponsored events, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion fails. Discussion, action, amendment to the City of Chavano Park Town Plan. Mary Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Chavano Park Town Plan was initiated eight years ago, formally adopted in 2010. The cost to produce the town plan was $18,299.19. As a formal city document, the town plan sets forth general goals and objectives stating the city's collective vision for the future. The town plan provides a basis for growth and development in the future. It's intended to act as a guide, and it's intended to be used by city council and city staff in planning decisions. The town plan is a dynamic document and is intended to be reviewed and updated by city council. Accordingly, as the city grows and development occurs, the city will continue to refine and update the plan as part of the normal planning process. Several key planning areas are contemplated in the town plan, as we heard from the individual who came and spoke at Citizens to Be Heard. Two of the largest areas being Northwest Military Highway and the Municipal Tract. Since the inception of the town plan eight years ago, the city undertook action on those two areas, and we can get into discussion on that if the motion gets seconded. I would move that in accordance with Section 213.003 of the Texas Local Government Code, this council by ordinance established procedures for amending our town plan to reflect the city and TechStop plans as to Northwest Military Highway, and to reflect the results of the city's Municipal Tract Citizen Survey conducted by Core Research as it relates to city action on the Muni Tract.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. We're open for discussion. I noticed that you've limited the expansion of the town plan to two items. As a city, we've actually gone through the town plan process about every eight to nine years in the last 20-year period. Before that, there was no town plan. It was kind of everybody sat around the coffee pot at somebody's house and came up with a vision for the community. So, from the standpoint of history, this is an appropriate time for us to review all of the terms of the town plan and for us to decide what is the vision, what is our collective vision as a council and as a city for this city as we go forward for the next decade. And was that intentional, that you were limiting it to only two items?
What I noted from historical documents is that there was no town plan prior to 2009 when it was initiated. It was formally adopted for the first and only time in 2010. Since that time, there are, as you note, there are other issues that are denoted in the town plan. Since 2010, however, the only two that have been demonstrably impacted have been issues related to the Muni Tract and Northwest Military Highway. And for those reasons, I mean, I mean, the other one that's in the town plan that has been contemplated without anything concrete has been the drainage issue. I didn't put that in my discussion points or talking points here tonight, or anything related to that as we discuss it tonight, just because nothing's been done by the city. Whereas, as I pointed out, we've spent almost $20,000 on the town plan that was adopted in 2010. In 2014 and 2015, we spent probably in excess of $30,000 related to the feasibility study and the Core Research, as we did a survey as to what residents wanted to be done, if anything, on, on the Muni Tract. I think if you look at that document, the town plan specifically contemplates as an objective the creation of a community, community center and the establishment of a master plan for the Muni Tract. However, as I said, in 2014 and 2015, we executed that action step by commissioning a resident survey and the feasibility study. The result of that survey was that 62% of respondents supported leaving the Muni Tract alone. As set out in the executive summary of that document, a clear majority of more than 50% of respondents favored protecting the Muni Tract in its natural state. So, that's as to Muni Tract. With respect to Northwest Military Highway, the information is all on the website regarding the city's involvement with TechStop to improve Northwest Military Highway. We know that in 2020, that work will begin. That plan authorized by TechStop with the help of the city differs demonstrably from what's laid out in the town plan, and as a result, we should amend the town plan.
Okay. You're Mary Ann, I don't mean to disagree with you on that this is the first town plan. We actually received a ring binder that was led, from a committee that was led by Hans Levy. The committee started about the time that we accepted Chavano Creek into our community. There were about 18 members, including Mr. Rice and many other citizens, who participated in that process. It wasn't a product that was, that looked like the town plan, but there was actually a planning event that went on in our community. A lot of it was logistics as far as planning for buildings and planning for fire trucks and things like that. But this is, this would actually be the third time that we're coming back to this item.
And I'm not trying to argue about how many town plans there were. I just think it's time we amend the town plan to, to reflect what residents have told us and what actually will be happening with, happening with Northwest Military in less than three years, probably.
Okay. Michelle?
I agree with Mary Ann, although I would like to amend it to include review of everything in the town plan. And I say this because since the town plan was first passed, over 500 homes in our city have either been built or have had new residents. So, there's been a whole change of landscaping of over 1,000 people that have moved into our city that may or may not have an opinion that we should probably seek as far as what they'd like to see moving forward. So, for that reason, I would like to amend the motion to include review of everything in the town plan.
Okay, I'm going to consider that a motion to substitute, because it's everything versus two items.
Yes.
That's a very major change. Do I have a motion, do I have a second on the motion to substitute?
Second.
I have a, Bob has seconded the motion to substitute. We're now open for discussion on the motion to substitute. Who wants to start?
I already do.
Alan?
I would just say that, to me, it seems worthwhile that the timing is right to go ahead and redo a town plan, because we're basically about 10 years in.
Okay. Mike?
I would support the substitute if our understanding is that the contents of Mary Ann's motion are specifically included, that, that we want the town plan to, the, the whole thing, to include consideration of the survey results for the Municipal Tract and Northwest Military. If that's not included in the intent of the mover in the second, then I guess I would not be in favor of it.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have a, on the motion, just to clarify, just a question. Because in the reference on 213.003, adoption or amendment of comprehensive plan, it gives an A and a B. Says, A, a comprehensive plan may be adopted or amended by ordinance following, and then it talks about a hearing, which the public is given opportunity to testimony, present written evidence, and a review by the municipality's Public Planning and Zoning Commission or department if exist. Or, option B, which is what I believe you made your motion for, a municipality may establish in its charter, we don't have a charter, so, or by ordinance, procedures for adopting and amending a comprehensive plan. The way I heard the ordinance, your motion was to establish procedures by ordinance for amending the town plan. So, my question is just, was it your intent to have staff then go and establish procedures for amending the town plan, or do you want to proceed past that and just, I was unclear.
Let me, let me just say, I am all for allowing residents the opportunity to tell us what they want. So, I have no problem with completely having hearings where people come and tell us what it is they want with, with respect to the, to the Muni Tract, for one example, okay? And if we want to open it up and, and residents come and tell us what they want done with respect to drainage, what they want done with respect to whatever. I know we, there's not really much we can do with respect to public hearings for the town, for Northwest Military, because TechStop and the city have already come up with a plan. That plan is different from what is in the outdated town plan from 2010. And so, basically, what it would be is simply reflecting the, that agreement for Northwest Military. And so, in my mind, because since 2015, this council, neither this council nor the city has done anything with respect to the Muni Tract, my, my thinking was that we would just take the results of the core survey and plug that into the town plan. It's not a costly thing. All it does is reflect what residents have told us in a survey that we paid over $25,000 for, or at least $25,000 for, more than we paid for the town plan. And we haven't done anything with that information. So, I'm not opposed to opening it up. Let's have hearings. Let's go with Section A of, of 213.003 of the Texas Local Government Code, then have Planning and Zoning look at it. I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that we reflect what residents have told us.
I, I think I understood your intent, and, but just, maybe if you could read, read your motion, if that's what you want, because it read to me that your motion was to establish the procedures, which I didn't think you wanted us to come back and establish procedures by ordinance, I think, or maybe you do, and then...
No, I, I think that the city council can do whatever it collectively agrees to do. And so, if we can collectively agree to come up with what is contemplated in 213.003 of the Texas Local Government Code that says we come up with a plan as to how to amend this outdated town plan, great, let's do that. If this council collectively does not want to do that, then let's go with Section A of 213.003. And that means that, you know, in my notes here, I just say, if, if we're going to go that route, then let's go ahead and pick a hearing date. Get forward, move in on that, and, and work with Planning and Zoning to get that on their agenda. But I, I don't have a problem with opening it up. If, if this council collectively says, "Let's do that," and that we need to do that, great, let's do it. But let's make sure that two of the issues that have been impacted since 2010 that are, that loom very large in the town plan are Northwest Military and the Muni Tract. We've done things since 2010 as a city and by city action that have changed what's in the town plan. So, let's somehow capture that and have it reflected in the town plan. If this council tonight says, "Okay, great, we have all that information, but let's go a step further. We're going to disregard what the core survey with respect to Muni Tract told us, and we're, you know, we've got 500 new homes, so let's maybe take a new survey." If that's what that, this council is saying, then let's be very clear to residents and tell them that.
Okay, we are discussing this motion to substitute. Mary Ann, thank you for clarifying, and I think that you were asking for, I, I thought when you asked for this, that you were asking for, under Section 213.003, a comprehensive, an amendment to the comprehensive plan, because you were addressing specific items, as opposed to adopting a procedure. I did not hear that in your motion, but I apologize if, if I misunderstood. I understood in Michelle's motion to substitute, that Michelle is asking that we adopt a comprehensive plan by amendment following hearings of, of the city and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that we reestablish a, like we did the last time, a committee to manage the town plan process. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle. I don't want to put words into either one of your mouths.
Through Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Okay, so, let me see if I can't write something down here.
Are we voting on which motion?
We're, we're going to be voting on the motion to substitute, the supplemental motion, I'm sorry, or the motion to substitute, because it usurps the scope of your amendment so completely, because yours was limited to an amendment that would involve both a hearing and a, both the hearings by Planning and Zoning and city council with, that the process involve all of the citizens. Now, if, if you were asking for the second one, she can still make a motion to substitute in either case.
To, to be clear, all I'm asking is for this council to collectively agree that we need to amend the town plan to reflect Northwest Military, the changes that occurred as the TechStop.
Yeah, and we're not talking about, but we're not talking about your motion. We're talking about the motion to substitute. Thank you for clarifying the procedural issue for Bill, because Bill did have questions, and I appreciate you addressing Bill's question, and I recognized him as a point of procedure.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clarify, because you, you mentioned...
We're talking about the motion to substitute, though. Now, we're not talking about the primary motion. We're talking about the motion. The motion to substitute is the motion that is on the floor. Okay. Adopt by, adopt by, adopt, adopt a comprehensive plan by amendment to the existing, adopt by a comprehensive plan, adopt by a comprehensive plan by an amending ordinance following council and P and Z hearings. And amendment. Does that kind of make sense to what you wanted? Adopt by a comprehensive plan by amending the, by amending the ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings, a town plan for 2017?
Yes.
Is that what you meant?
Why adopt by a comprehensive plan? Why not adopt a comprehensive plan? Why do you buy in there?
Adopt.
Yeah, okay.
A comprehensive, adopt a comprehensive plan by amending the, by, by and amending ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings.
Or a town plan.
A town plan for 2017. Okay. Okay, I apologize. Normally, we would have things outlined. Okay, Michelle's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle. I believe that your motion is, "Adopt a comprehensive plan by an amending ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings, a town plan for 2017 and future years." Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm going to give it to you as well. Adopt a comprehensive plan by an amending ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings, a town plan for 2017 and future years. Okay, Bob, is that consistent with your second?
Yes.
Okay.
So, quick question?
Yes.
So, that amendment...
Replaces yours.
It, it replaces mine, but it contemplates creating a whole new town plan as of 2017. Is that, is that a correct characterization?
Well, it's, it's basically reviewing what your, your items and then everything else in the plan.
It doesn't say that.
Because we also have hike and bike.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah. Well, we're going to, I think they ought to go back and review it and have hearings.
So, create a whole new town plan.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't think they're going to recreate a new one. I think they're going to amend the existing one.
But that's not what that motion says.
It says amend existing.
It says by an amendment... It says by an amendment, adopt a comprehensive plan by an amending ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings, a town plan for 2017 and future years.
I, I mean, it's broad enough to include whatever needs to be changed.
Everything would be reviewed.
Okay.
The survey will be reviewed in the same way that the TechStop plan would be reviewed.
And we're just going to do that via hearings from city council? Do we need to do a facilitator like we did? Is that contemplated in that?
Well, the, the last time we did this, we created a subcommittee of the whole of the Planning and Zoning Commission where the nine commissioners sat on it until they were replaced. So the new commissioners would become members. And each member of city council, including the mayor, would appoint one additional member to that subcommittee, so that there would be 15 representatives, nine from planning and zoning, that had been selected by plant, by city council in the past. But in order to ensure that city council members had a voice in the process, that they would be able to name their own member who would then participate in the town plan process. Anna participated as one of our citizen members, I can't remember who the other, Don Wallace participated as one of the citizen members, and there were four other people, and off the top of my head, I just don't remember who the other four were.
Okay, the, the only thing I wanted to point out is the bullet points that I read at the outset were all taken from the town plan. The town plan, and I'll just finish with this, is it's a dynamic document. It's intended to be reviewed and updated. I'm not saying, I, I'm not sure that the, the supplemental motion does that, but if it does, great, I'm, I'm all for doing what the document says, which is to amend when appropriate. And I think that we've got at least two items here that it, it, it doesn't necessarily need to be that drawn out. It's not, wasn't necessarily the, the extent of, of my initial thought process. I just wanted to reflect what residents have told us and what we know is happening. If additional work needs to be done, and a majority of council believes that that is necessary to completely redo the town plan, then that's what a majority decides to do.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion to substitute? Okay, there's no other discussion on the motion to substitute? All in favor of the motion to substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion to substitute is approved. The motion to substitute is now the primary motion before the floor. The motion is to adopt a comprehensive plan by an amending ordinance and following council and P and Z hearings, a town plan for 2017 and future years. We're now open for discussion on the primary motion. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just request that our minutes, normally, we just keep action minutes, but our minutes be, include the intent of the council here at, from this last discussion. Otherwise, it's a, I voted for it, once, I'll vote for it again.
Okay. We, we have, for everybody's consideration, at time slot eight o'clock to eight twenty-five, which would be ninety minutes to a hundred and, a hundred, ninety minutes to a hundred, no, ninety minutes to a hundred and fifteen minutes on our time scale, this item, and detailed discussion. And I think that it'd be difficult for Xena to actually give justice to Mary Ann's and our comments that have been going on here. So it, it is up to the city secretary to prepare the minutes in accordance with our general standards. Okay, do we have any other discussion? Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign, the motion carries. Item number 913, discussion action, selection of Chavano Park auditors and authorizing city manager Hill to negotiate terms. Bill?
We've talked about this a number of times. We've had the current audit firm for five years. In fact, last year, there was a request that we consider going out for proposals, qualifications for that, and we kind of agreed we would defer that one year. Bottom line is, in February, the city issued a statements of qualifications and proposals for professional auditing firm. The deadline was for the proposal was February 22nd of 2017 with final deadline, that's questions by February 22nd, and the final deadline was one March. The city received four bids for RFQ, for qualifications proposals, and they were our previous audit firm, ABIP, Armstrong, Vaughn and Associates, Darlik Butler and Associates, and Lee and Carter. Darlik, I probably pronounced that wrong. Sorry about that. We, we received the proposals. We had published criteria for evaluating them. The criteria was independence, license to practice in Texas, and that was a yes or no question. Firm's qualification experience is 15%. Partner supervisory and staff qualifications experience, 35%. Their firm's approach and plan, 35%, and the audit schedule, because we've gotten to a habit of trying to get a tight audit turnaround, so that the auditors come in, in December, and then we can present in, in February. And it's actually pretty challenging, but Laura makes it happen somehow, January. The bottom line is, we formed a scoring committee. It really wasn't significantly that hard. We have a scoring sheet. Do you have that? Do we put, did we post that? Again, the, the firm that scored the most was Armstrong, Vaughn and Associates. Frankly, ABIP was very close. We, we understood that we could have selected APIP, but there was a preference that we have a new look associated with that. I don't think that was the predominant scoring criteria that occurred. The other two firms were actually a notch below both of those firms. There were some instructions that Darlik, I don't know, the Butler and Associates did not comply with, so we, we disqualified them, but they didn't score very high anyway. So the bottom line of this is, and the count, and their package with you, we're recommending the selection of Armstrong, Vaughn and Associates, and the city manager would authorize, negotiate the term of the contract. And we don't anticipate that this would be any significant cost increase.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move, we approve the selection of Armstrong, Vaughn and Associates, and authorize the city manager to negotiate the terms of the contract. If I receive a second, I'll speak to the motion.
Second.
Okay, Michelle was second in the motion. Please.
Quick comment, the three years that I was city manager at Olmos Park, Armstrong, Vaughn was our auditors. They're hard, they're precise, they're timely, they assign a partner, they assigned a partner to the city, and the partners supervised it. They produced a very understandable audit, and they spent a lot of time explaining that audit to the city council. I don't think we can do better than this, so I would move adoption of this firm.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 614, discussion action, authorizing the city manager to purchase, in parentheses, cop tracks, close parentheses, body worn cameras by Applied Concepts, Inc., as part of the previously approved grant. Bill, Chief Lacy, why don't you come on up? Chief Lacy, and I'll let you talk first, and we'll let Bill talk after you.
I think I'm going to start first, Mayor, if you don't, just, just the intro, if I could. We've, we've rehearsed this, actually.
Okay, good.
So, just for background, you've already approved body armor cams in the grant, and I just want to make that, that's the point I want to clear. That was July. But then, and that was Chief Creed's recommendation. Chief Lacy came in, but, and as part of his assessment process, Chief Lacy's going through that assessment process and deal that. And the bottom line, before I turn it over to him, was to give him some cock, top cover, and I've been working through this with him, is it selected previous equipment, WolfCom, and the implementation found was, was, you know, Chief Lacy's assessment is it's inadequate. And the primary reason for this conclusion is the system did not have the ability to integrate with the dash cam system, or future system. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lacy to give all the details and so forth.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Ray Lacy, your police chief. I will tell you that one of the projects I took on with this for the body worn cameras, which is something I've used, I'm very familiar with cameras, both in the cars and, and body worn's, is, is I wanted to make sure we were getting the right product for our public, the right product for our officers, and for the city, so that when we need the data, we can use the data. I did want a team effort, so I pulled staff from both my patrol division, which Sergeant Page, who's the interim lieutenant, Sergeant Mario Nakazuno, and IT is a very important part of this, and it was part of what was not considered before. So the, before I even talked to my staff, I talked to Curtis and asked him to be an integral part of this, and he was. As a team, we reviewed different systems, went to locations that had those systems, asked actual end, end users, the officers, what's the goods, what's the bads. Some of the units, we even, I made some phone calls out of state and talked to agencies as close as Louisiana and as far away as the Wisconsin State Police, who uses one of these, and got their feedback from these. I want to make sure that what we produce as a police department, not only is an effective system for us, but it will truly, like Mr. Hill said, it needs to integrate and work as, as a cohesive product with the car units, which we're required to use because of racial profiling, and that the software is going to be the same. I don't want a, an Apple's, you know, brand A car camera, brand B body camera, which means we have two different software systems, two different ways of downloading it. It, it becomes very cumbersome. And it is a very time-consuming product, anyway. Every time we get a request for these, even for court or an open records request, it takes a lot of time. Someone has to review that, someone has to burn the copies, and obviously, it, that time doesn't really get replaced, even in the small amounts of money that the city recoups. So my game plan here was to make sure we get the right thing for you, so that when we need it, we could be there. We, we do have some grant money that was pre-approved. We do still have that grant money available. I work really close with our finance director. She oversees that, since it's a financial situation, and it's there. It is only for the, the units, the body cameras that will be out, actually own the officers on the street. So we were limited how much they would give us, so we, we already have a dollar figure that we know is the maximum they're going to give us back. And what I would hope to do is incorporate our body cameras, then in with our, with a new product of car cameras, so that we have one cohesive product for us to work with. And without getting too involved in just this, I can, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, do we have a motion concerning authorizing the city manager to purchase the copy tracks, body worn cameras by Applied Concept as part of the previously approved grant?
So must.
Alan has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
Chief Lacy, would it make more sense to buy a couple of backup cameras with this purchase to be used when cameras go down, or if we decide to add patrolmen during the next fiscal budget? Or would, would we receive an anticipated per unit savings buying now rather than later?
I, I would say we would, because as we buy this, we're, we're going to be producing a, a first-time purchase cost from them, and they're looking to have that done. I can tell you from personal use, both in Houston area and then here, body cameras, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna get broke. Officer gets in a fight, he gets knocked into the water, there's going to be some issues where we have to send them back. Even when they're warranted, it's going to take a little bit of time. And the, the situation I had in my past city was, we did not have any spares. So when an officer didn't have one, they may not have one for a month or so. So I, I tried to build in a little more than what Chief Creed had done. I think that's a smart move on my part to do. I, I'm certainly going to run with whatever council gives us, and we'll make the best of it. With extras, even when, I know with the fire chief, we, we have three sworn law enforcement, three sworn over there. If they're going to go and do an investigation, or go have to talk to a suspect, I, I have no issues in making sure that they have one of the spares to take out, too. In today's world, everyone expects to see what's happening, and if we can't show it to them, they don't believe it. So I, I'm certainly open to doing that.
I have another question, too, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please, Mike.
Would it make more sense to buy and integrate patrol car cameras now and seek to make a unified integration when we integrate the body worn cameras, rather than waiting for the next fiscal year and then trying to integrate them into an already operational system? And if that would make more sense, do you have a sense of the cost that it would do to, to purchase both of them right now?
If I could have a wish list, my, my wish would be yes, to do this as a, one operational package, so that everything works together, and so that we know when we're using product A versus product B. If you can give me just a second. Ballpark figure-wise, sir? I, I would say $54,000 probably would, would do a complete body camera, an entire fleet camera, software, hardware, it was, the hardware that was already included. There wouldn't be any additional computer hardware needs, there would just be the reconfiguration one time.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion. And that's for Xena. I move that we approve the purchase of 20 cop tracks, body worn cameras, to purchase and install nine cop tracks vehicle cameras at a cost not to exceed $55,000, excluding matching money. This total includes the costs for service configuration and additional storage. Any additional cost above the 2016, 2017 Chavano Park municipal, municipal budget line items for body worn cameras to be funded from the Crime Control District funds. If I receive a second, I'll speak to it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Bob, this is a motion to substitute. Okay, Mike?
The, it seems to make sense to do it all at once, rather than piecemealing it. We have the, have the money. I'll take, take a hit for not including this in the, the car cameras in the goals and objectives for this year, so, you know, that, I should have thought that far ahead. I didn't, but when this came up, it, it made sense to me. And we've got the money in crime prevention. Why go through the integration twice? Why put the extra time into the IT guy to get, get it up and going? And why take the, the patrolman off the street twice for, for the training? And this, the 20 is three more than the chief requested. That gives the spares, I didn't even think about the sworn officers and the fire department, so this would make, make those available without reducing those available to the, to the police. So I'd urge that we adopt this substitute, and go ahead and adopt this motion as it stands. And here's for Xena, if someone wants to get it to her.
Okay, Michelle, you-
Well, although I don't disagree with it, I have two issues with it. One, I think it should be coming from the city manager, not from us. And two, we can't make a decision on crime control prevention district funds, that's a different board, so we have to go to them to get permission, permission.
So are you making a motion to postpone consideration of this item until next council meeting, when we can join as a board member? Is that what you're asking?
That's not what I said, but what is it? You-
Well, the-
We, we can't convene as the crime-
Right, correct.
Understand, got, got that.
So we can't do the money. And I also think it would be nice for the city manager to come and give his opinion on what he wants us to do, or at least tell us now, instead of making the decision for him.
My, my answer to that is, decision to, to buy both of them at once and field them at once is a policy decision, and that's our job. And then, once we tell him what our policy is, he can execute it. And I'm more than willing to strike the portion of crime control from the, from the motion, if that- the motion if that, uh, needs to be done.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion?
So, I have a couple of questions. One is, the, the grant that we're talking to sixty-three hundred, is that impacted any which way by adding the additional, um, equipment? Or is that just a grant, no matter what we, it's a one-time grant effect?
The, the, the six thousand three hundred seventy dollars, um, is the maximum that the grant was approved for. And, and the grant states that it will cover equipment for what they call street or duty use officers. So, thirteen is where Chief Creed came with that number, because we have twelve officers assigned in patrol, and then the court enforcement, code enforcement, police officer, uh, is still listed in my operational group. So, those thirteen are there. So, we, we're not gonna lose any of that funding, uh, by doing more, but they will not increase the grant, uh, by doing more. It, it's a fixed amount.
So, I'm, I'm assuming, Bill, you're talking, you guys spent a lot of time talking about this, and obviously, the, the approval that we gave was for the body cameras, and I'm sure that's why you stuck with it, but it sounds to me like you probably looked at other scenarios. I, I would agree with Mike's assessment on that. Did you, have you guys thought about the whole package? Is, is this something that you discussed with Chief Lacy?
Yes. I have, frankly, and for the reason you just outlined, that it was the body camera, that I kinda kept it narrow. And, um, Chief Lacy and Curtis both came and briefed me. It's clear that we're going to have to move to this combined system, and if you really, frankly, if you wanna be, if we wanna be efficient and most effective, and if we have the ability, adopting it as, per this motion is, um, is the best way to do that.
Okay. I, I do wanna stop you for just a second. I wanna ask Charlie. Charlie, we've now gone beyond, we may have gone beyond the scope of the agenda item to include purchasing additional items. Is the public adequately on notice, uh, with the expansion of this to include other capital items that are not listed, uh, under our recommendation?
It's, well, the, the agenda item says body worn cameras.
And, and not our police car cameras?
No. I mean, I, you know, it's, um, it's a close call, quite honestly, with respect, with respect to specificity. The lower the, the lower the importance of, of what you're talking about, the less specificity.
Okay.
And, and the clarification, we would have to come back again for an ordinance-
Yeah, you have to come back anyway.
-for approval to, with, with whatever, in an ordinance format, budget amendment to do this.
Okay. So, Mike, if I could get you to go back and to consider your amendment as a request to the city manager to bring this back to us at our next meeting, including the budget amendment, uh, and to designate wherever you want the money to come from, um, and we can vote on submitting it to the city manager, so that he can bring it back.
We need to approve all the body arm, warrant cameras first.
See what they have to say.
If they, if they want to, they can just approve that part tonight. But we can prove that and come back with the other ones. Keep your timeline associated with the cameras.
So, the question is, is, to the chief, was- understanding that we, we could come back to the next meeting for the vehicles, but is there an urge, and I'm asking him, 'cause I don't really know, is it, is there a timeliness that you would like council to act, at least on the body worn cameras, and then direct us to come back to the second thing? Or can this wait till the next month? That's the question that I have.
I, I believe that we, the smartest move, if we're gonna even, if we're gonna consider moving forward with the cars, too, is to do it all in one movement. Because we, we don't wanna buy the body cameras and try to implement them and then have to make the change thirty days later to incorporate them into the car units. So, I, you know, sitting on this for another thirty days would, would not impact our-
Yeah.
-ability.
Okay. Mike, does that affect your motion? I'm sorry, Mary Ann? Oh, Bob?
Look, just wanted to comment, is, it seems to me, if you add that to the proposal, you're gonna see some additional cost savings anyways, correct?
We will eventually, in, in that-
I mean, on the bid itself, on the purchase price itself.
On the purchase price, because they, obviously, a vendor wants to do a, a total turnkey package. Also, the current equipment, which we, we have a lot of issues with, we, we pay a pretty hefty fee every year for maintenance, um, which, they, they do assist us. They, my sergeant back here calls them quite often and has to try to get them to log in to figure out why we can't download a system. That cost, which I, I don't have that figure, um, will go away. So, there will be some costs we did associate that will help offset some of this in the future. We, at least, we won't be paying for two separate systems, which we would have to do if we keep it.
If we post call this at night, you wouldn't have a problem with it.
No, sir. And, and, and we could do the whole, um, e, even the body cameras. I mean, i, if I, if I had those approved tonight, but I knew that we were gonna consider the next part, I, I wouldn't wanna try to put them into the field, because you, you have to do them a different way than when they go with the car, and then I, I, I would prefer not to try to pay to have that part done twice. I'd rather do it one time, the right way.
Okay. Mike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize you.
Then, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my substitute motion, if the second will concede.
Would you entertain a replacement substitute motion from, uh, Mike? You have the second? Will you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we have your-
Then, I would move that we postpone this until next, next month, uh, and direct the city manager to come back to us with the purchase of twenty body worn cameras and nine vehicle cameras.
Okay. So, so basically, it is your motion, uh, with the insertion of, uh, instead of approve the purchase, authorize the city manager to bring back this item?
Yes.
Okay. Bob, do you second that? Okay, second. Do we have any further discussion? Very good, Mike. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item seven. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Consent with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to pull anything from item number seven? Okay. Brings us to item number eight. Consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion, uh, there will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items eight point one through eight point four?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mike to approve and/or accept items eight point one through eight point four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alan has seconded. Uh, there being no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number nine, uh, we're at that point where we can adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Mike has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned.